Ready, Diane? All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to session our work session this evening. Start off with recognizing members of administration and the president tonight.
Mayor Jamie Slutes. Safety Service Director Renee Baker.
Here.
Assistant Law Director Edmund Mack.
Here.
City Engineer Alex Pitts.
Here.
Director of Development Ted Hearn-Kane.
Here.
Police Chief Jason St. Noi.
Here.
And Income Tax Budget Director Lori Katagidis-Voran.
Here.
Is there anyone from administration I missed? That's it. President Pro Tem.
Thank you. Let the record show all nine members of council are here, as well as President Slater. All right. We're going to start off with, we have one piece of legislation under committee of the whole. We're going to start off with that this evening. Please prepare a resolution in support of the City of Maslin serving as the government sponsor for PoliKinetics' application to the Ohio EPA for the 2026 Scrap Tire Grant Program. Please grant, per grant guidelines, businesses are required to partner with a government sponsor to be eligible for the Scrap Tire Grant. Mr. Hearn-Kane, are you ready to step forward?
Good evening, Councilman Gregg, members of council. This gentleman should look familiar. This is Bill Olem, the CEO of PoliKinetics, to whom we gave a Small Economic Development Grant a couple of months ago. I passed out a sheet before the meeting on the Scrap Tire Program with some information for you. About a month ago, Mr. Olem came to the administration asking if we would serve as a government sponsor for a grant application on their behalf to the Ohio EPA through the 2026 Scrap Tire Grant Program. The mayor and I decided that we wanted to get this in front of you now in a resolution format to gain your support level before a whole bunch of work was done. We obviously wouldn't have to come back to council until the springtime if they were awarded a grant and asked for your permission then. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve in full disclosure so everyone knows kind of what has been asked of us and what we are considering. So the Ohio EPA Scrap Tire Grant Application Window starts on October 6th and it ends December 5th with grant awards being made on April 1st of next year. What this is, is a program where there's a maximum grant request of $300,000 with a 100% match from the grantee. It is very competitive, and PoliKinetics fortunately is going to be doing all the work because it benefits them. The grant guidelines state that for-profit businesses are required to have a government sponsor, and I will share with you what those duties are. In the beginning part of the process, the official grantee, which would be the City of Maslin, were required to submit the grant application to the Ohio EPA, obviously in consultation and much discussion with the, what do they call the company, the interested, what do they call the party? There's some name that they use as the company, but basically they're going to be doing all the work. We submit the application. During the project window, which I believe is up to a two-year window, our role would be to make sure that the project stays on track and verify that whatever purchases PoliKinetics makes is according to the grant agreement with the state of Ohio. The Ohio EPA recommends at least quarterly check-ins. We will probably meet or talk monthly as that process goes through to make sure everything's okay. And at the end of the project, our responsibility as the sponsor would be basically to complete the final compliance report, which verifies that grant expenditures and proof of payments have been made. We send that to the Ohio EPA. When they approve that, they would send the grant money to the city, which we would then distribute to the company. There would be an agreement, obviously, between PoliKinetics and the city on how that relationship works. But at the end of the day, they're putting up their basically $600,000 to buy equipment and things, and I'll let Mr. Olem specifically talk about what they want to use the grant for. But at the end of the day, our job would be, my job would be, is kind of the overseer of their project. Make sure that what they're doing is what is stated in the agreement. Make sure that the payments are made and everything is okay at the end of the day so then we can get the money, which we can then reimburse them. So if they were awarded the full $300,000 max, that money would come to the city. We would distribute it then to PoliKinetics. Are there any questions on anything I just went over?
I think you mentioned it, but just to be clear, the money for the match, where does that come from?
PoliKinetics.
On the company? Okay.
So if, let's say they were awarded $300,000. They have to match 100% of that, so the whole thing is $600,000. They spend all of that. Once I verify that everything is okay according to the agreement, then when they close it out, the state would give the city the money and then we would do it to them. We're a pass-through, and I don't, I guess it's a level of assurance from the government standpoint that if you're giving money to a private business, they have an intermediary, which is basically what we are.
So no financial outlay whatsoever from the city?
Zero.
Okay. Other questions? Councilwoman Brian Huth.
Thank you. And you around about answered it, Mr. Hearn-Kane, but community development is the department that would be overseeing the grant, and then you or someone in your office specific is that person?
I would be doing it personally.
Okay.
Any others? Councilwoman Cunningham?
Thank you, Pro Tem. It just sounds to me like this is an actual win-win for the city. And again, thank you for coming to Maslin.
Anything else? Yeah, so if not, I'll ask, would Mr. Olem like to speak to council?
Thank you again for inviting me, and things are going very well with PoliKinetics and Maslin. Just to start, give you a little background on what happened with the scrap, with the $5,000 Economic Development Grant, purchased equipment. With that equipment and some other equipment that we purchased, we are consuming expanded polystyrene foam insulation that would normally go in a construction and demolition debris landfill. We're consuming that and producing insulating panels, three inches thick, two inches thick, one and a half inch thick. They're four by eight sheets, and they're being sold into the construction trade. So we're taking this material and putting it right back to use again. And there's a little bit of waste, and we do it that way, so little trim scraps and so forth. So we take this trim scraps and put them through our shredder, and then they go in the densifying unit, and we make pellets out of those, and the pellets are sold for somewhere between $600 and $800 a ton. So there's no waste. We don't even have a dumpster at the plant. It's pretty cool. With respect to the Scrap Tire Grant, the, we have a lot of work to do at PoliKinetics to do this, and there is an application to complete. We have to provide all of the information to fill in all the blanks. We have to close the financing, it's capital raise, capital formation, close the financing for a $300,000 match for a $300,000 request, okay? And we probably would go at the $300,000 level because we're talking about enough equipment to take tires apart into different commodities that are sold into industry. A tire has really got three major types of construction material. It's got the rubber, of course. It's got a steel reinforcing fiber, the side belts and the belting of the tire. And it's got a cord, a polymer cord made out of rayon, polyester, nylon, those are the three principal ones. And when we take the tires apart, then we have those three things that go into three separate piles in the plant, not exactly piles, but three separate, the steel goes to the smelter, right? So it's got good value. This is high alloy steel. The cord goes, it looks like cotton when it comes out of the process, and it goes into the insulating market. So you see these great big concrete panels that are put beside the highway, sound barriers. They go into things like that. They can go into the automotive industry. It's crazy, all the places it can go, but that's the kind of stuff. It's not a real valuable thing. It's insulation, you know? But that's where it goes. It doesn't go to the landfill. And then the rubber goes through the PoliKinetics process to be converted into petrochemicals that are used to make new rubber and new plastics. And we're in lengthy conversations with one of the two global tire manufacturers. We're members of the polymer industry cluster in Akron, and we're speaking to those members there, and they have asked us now for analysis of the oil, and we haven't produced the oil yet, so we're doing things in steps. We build out our business in phases. Phase one was styrofoam recycling, and then phase two gets into the chemical recycling, and we begin that with the tires. And at the same time, we can do it with the plastics, but the building a little pilot unit to produce that, consuming the rubber from race car tires that this company makes. It's the waste from their plant. So that's what this is all for. So Director Hearn-Kane was kind enough to describe the process in this. We have lots of blanks to fill. We have to raise the capital. If there's anything that we don't meet, we've already been given an exception by, pardon me, by Ohio EPA because of the nature of our process and what we're doing. They have told us that we are going to, they will look at our application, consider our application, even though we only have two years of financial statements because of our prior history and all of that and what we're doing now. But if, for any reason, we cannot meet any of the requirements, then the application would not be forwarded to the City of Maslin. Don't want to waste your time, right? If we can't, if there's, if there's one failure, then that's up to us, and okay, fine. But this, we're coming early so that in case that we do put all these together, and we're pretty confident we're going to be able to do that, and when we get that put together, then it would come to Director Hearn-Kane and move through the process. Yes, any question? Sure.
Through the process, when you're decomposing, redistributing things, are there any issues to our environment in soil and water and in air from the processes that you use?
This is all done indoors, or whatever is outdoors is enclosed, okay? So there's no contact with soil, and this is not, I come out of the environmental background. I had an environmental consulting firm for thirty, kind of a number of years. At any rate, and I'm very concerned about fate and transport of pollutants to any receptor. So receptors can be human beings, soil, water, air, all of that, right? So we really are concerned about that. There are others that aren't so concerned, but this is part of our mission. It's just what we do. So we're very careful about that. Earlier, another person asked, well, you're going to have tires, you know, how many tires are you going to have and so forth? We don't want to have a big inventory of unprocessed tires. We have to have enough, but not a great, not too much inventory. Tires are stored indoors. They're not stored outdoors. That's because when it rains in a tire, the water collects, the rainwater collects in a tire. And that's a great place for our friends, the Asian tiger mosquito, to breed inside of that, and so this is what we, no, we don't, we prevent that. Okay?
Those are my other two questions, so thank you.
Oh.
And you have a working metric for how many tires you'll be able to have at a time so that you don't have the overflow and onslaught of junk?
I'll say that I have roughly yes, formally not yet, but we're looking at ultimately being able to process as much as 20,000 tons per year. That's a lot. And so that could be tires. It could be plastic. It could be tires plus plastic. But the point is, is that it's probably, the way things are looking right now, it would probably be two lines in Maslin to where we're 20,000 tons of tire rubber, okay? Not steel doesn't count. We're just talking about the rubber. And 20,000 tons of end-of-life, single-use, post-consumer plastic. So those two, two separate lines, and there's a lot of jobs involved in that, so that's what we want to do.
Councilwoman Harwick Smith?
Thank you, Councilman Gregg. I was just wondering where you're getting all your tires from? Are you going to accept donations from people for their tires, or do you just get them from other places that people drop them off?
First and foremost, we must follow the Ohio EPA protocol for aggregation, transportation, delivery of scrap tires and so forth. So there's a protocol for that. That's very tightly governed, right? So within that protocol, we would love to take tires from individuals to where they don't, you know, have to pay X amount of tires. We might charge a tiny little tipping fee, but a fraction of what they're paying to get rid of them now. Then we might not. We might charge, not charge anything. So it all depends, but it's easier to obtain tires from an aggregator just because we don't have as much traffic. So we haven't worked that detail out, but I'd love to do it. I mean, I'd love to have people in Maslin just to be able to bring those scrap tires and say, I don't want to pay $4 a piece to get rid of them, or whatever it is, and so they could bring them to us and we could use them, so, you know? I like that because what manufacturing company gets its raw materials for free?
Right.
You got to think about that, right?
Yeah, I think this is great.
It's a super business, so, yeah. So we want to, we can.
Well, I hope you get the grant. I love seeing this happening in Maslin, the whole recycling and making products from old products.
Thank you. And I'll tell you what, if we don't, we'll be back. If we don't get it this year, we're back next year. We're very persistent.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question for you, sir. Going back to the polystyrene, do you accept donations from individuals on styrofoam and so forth?
We are on an informal basis. We don't want to get crosswise with our solid waste management district, the David Held and the Stark-Tuscan Solid Waste Management District. But my wife's sister brings to the home a whole bunch of these medicine coolers, you know, they have, they come, they ship you the coolers, so I always have a truckload of those about every week coming in. And what we find, there's packaging materials. A fellow read the newspaper article back in June, and he came to the plant, and he just, you know, asked, he could come in, and he asked our operations director, are you taking styrofoam? And Paul said, well, yeah, and what you got? And he's had a whole truckload of Gaylords full of styrofoam packing material that was coming out of appliances and things and TVs and stuff, and he had all this styrofoam pack, that was all going to go in the landfill. So we took it, we make pellets out of it, sell the pellets into industry to make new polystyrene things. So the answer is yes, informally, but we want very much to work with our solid waste management districts. So we're doing things that are in line with their mission, and we play well with others.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would expect we'll put this on the agenda for Monday. All right. Next, we have community development with Councilwoman Creamer.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. I have one new item. Please prepare legislation to accept the dedication of road right-of-way for Outlot 261 and Lot 10320, owned by the City of Maslin and located at the intersection of Main Avenue West and Tremont Avenue Southwest, as shown on the attached map. At its August 13, 2025 meeting, the City Planning Commission approved said plat. This dedication is necessary for future intersection roadway improvements currently in design phase. It does have, it does not have emergency language. Mr. Hearn-Kane, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about this request?
Sure, thank you. This is kind of what it is. The Planning Commission approved the plat. This is to accept the dedication of the public right-of, road right-of-way at Main and Tremont for the roundabout. Engineer Pitts is here if you have any specific questions on the roundabout project, but this step is necessary to get that project forward. As you stated, it is in the design phase currently.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Hearn-Kane? Saying none? That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, economic development with Councilman Ray.
Thank you, Pro Tem. I have absolutely nothing today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, health, welfare, and building regulations with Councilwoman Cunningham.
Thank you. And this evening, nothing either.
Okay. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Harwick Smith?
Thank you, Councilman Gregg. I have nothing for parks and recs this evening.
Okay. Police and Fire, Councilman Markham?
Thank you. I don't believe we have anything tonight either.
Okay. Public Utilities and Environmental with Councilwoman Brian Huth?
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I do have Safety Service Director Baker here this evening. She would like to come forward with another representative to talk to us about our natural gas aggregate that's coming due this October.
Good evening, council. I wanted to come tonight to talk about our natural gas aggregation briefly. As most of you know, we were, I was here before on the electricity aggregation, but we also have a gas aggregation. But it's important to know that the gas aggregation is an opt-in program, not an opt-out. So what that means is unlike the electric aggregation, when we negotiated that and got that contract cost, all residents were automatically placed in that program, and they had to call to opt out of it. And that had to be voted on by the residents, that was voted on years ago on the ballot to have an opt-out program. Gas was never put on the ballot, so it is an opt-in program. Well, our current aggregation is coming due. It will actually be on the November meter reads, so it kind of ends in October, but it based on when the residents' meters are read, which can be different for different residents. So I've been trying to find an aggregation to get, obviously, a good cost. What we have come to find out is, for one, because we're an opt-in program for gas, a lot of the gas companies don't really want to do, do those because they don't get as many people as in an opt-out program. So currently, there, the rates for the standard rate, and I have Brenda here that can explain more of that, as the expert on those things and as our consultant, but the standard rate through Enbridge is actually lower than any, any other company that I could do an aggregation with. So therefore, I'm, I've decided not to do an aggregation because I don't think it would be fair to do an aggregation. It's going to be a higher rate because I know there's probably residents that would, probably don't want to shop, and they would rather just call the office like, like they do and say, hey, who do we use? And be able to call. But if they do that, it's a false sense that they're getting, that they're getting a deal because they're not going to. And even historically, I have a handout that I can give you, but it even shows on here that in the 2025, the, what the standard rate was, and it is, it is considerably, it is cheaper. It's even cheaper than what some other surrounding areas are even paying in an opt-out program. Now, again, it can fluctuate monthly because gas rates can fluctuate monthly, but they're just not based on historic data and looking into the future. It just doesn't look like it would make any sense to do an aggregation paying higher, thinking that these rates are going to climb because it doesn't look like they are. Now, I can definitely, obviously, keep an eye on them. If it looks like rates are going up and I could lock something in cheaper, I can obviously do that with the work of our consultant, and then we could also look at maybe next year, maybe even putting an opt-out program on the ballot if we thought that would be best for the residents. Do you want to pass this around? This is just some, this is just information on pretty much what I just kind of explained, but I wanted the opportunity to explain, and I'll be putting this out on our website, social media, any other way that I could get it out to the, to the residents. I know some residents have been calling the office, so obviously, as they're calling in, asking what our aggregation is, we will be explaining this, but it just doesn't make sense at this point to do any type of aggregation. It, it just wouldn't be fair to the residents. Does anybody have any questions for me? Or Brenda's here too. I mean, she can answer probably much better than I.
So our current gas that we're locked in, our rate is with Enbridge, and you're saying that...
Well, it's with Constellation.
Or Constellation.
So Enbridge is like the Ohio Edison when you compare it to like electricity. And then Constellation would be the supplier, like we went with NOPEC to supply us with who they did. Well, NOPEC's not the supplier, but they, we went with, who's the supplier for NOPEC?
Nextera.
Nextera is who we went through with Electric, so Constellation is the supplier. So, so what the residents would do is they would have to call Enbridge and say that they want the standard choice offer, which they have to offer.
So if they don't call, what happens?
They stay with whoever they're with right now. If they're with Constellation, they'll stay with, they'll go back to the utility, which would be Enbridge anyways. And some of them may be, may have already signed with different companies anyways by going to apples-to-apples and looking. The problem is also, to be quite honest, Constellation wasn't very cooperative with us in trying to obtain customer list and stuff, so I really can't even tell you how many of our residents actually are on the Constellation aggregate. I don't, we've tried and not having much luck.
So they don't have to make, if they're already with Enbridge, and they don't want to do anything, and it runs out, they don't have to do anything at all to just stay?
That's correct. Right, or no? Yeah.
There is, there is a provision called MVR, Market Variable Rate, which some people get put into. So what we're telling people is if they're in the current aggregation program with Constellation, and they want to be on the SCO, which is where they need to be, that they need to call Enbridge and say, I want to be on the SCO. And now you need to watch your bill. It takes about two bill cycles. If you don't see it on the third bill cycle, call Enbridge again and say, I want to be on SCO. Because MVR is where they automatically assign you to another supplier, and you're not getting that SCO rate, which is the low rate.
So an SCO stands for?
Standard Choice Offer, I'm sorry.
Standard?
Choice.
Choice Offer.
And we tried. Constellation was not cooperative at all. They recognized that they had the City of Maslin Aggregation Opt-In Program, but their response was, well, we can't tell you how many customers because they have individual customers that's on their bill, and we can't talk about people's bills with you because it's their own individual bill. So they couldn't give us, do we have 12, or do we have 1,200? We, we don't know. Now, historically, when you do an opt-in program, you mail to everybody and you get one to one and a half percent take rate, and this started back in 2021. So I'm assuming with attrition and those kinds of things that happen, that the numbers that are in this program are pretty low, but we certainly wanted to get information out to those folks that may still be on the program so they know what to do. I went out today just so I could be sure and tell you most up-to-date information, and I put on here the lowest apples-to-apples price was $409, and that was with $100 cancellation fee. And you can see based on the historic rates for 2025, there were only two months that that would have been lower than, and those are shoulder months, which means you don't use a lot of gas during that time. So we just don't feel in good conscience that we can recommend a program that is going to cost residents more. So that's why we're recommending to terminate the program. Now, as far as a ballot issue, if and when prices start to fluctuate, we don't see anything in the futures that looks like, you know, something crazy is going to happen, but all it takes is a war. Again, you know, with, when, when Russians invaded Ukraine, that just caused everything to go crazy. So world events definitely impact this. If you did put it on the ballot, for example, next year in May, and the people voted on it, you don't have to do anything right away, but you have the authority to do it. That's, an opt-in program is so much better than an opt-out program, or opt-out program is so much better than an opt-in program because, again, the suppliers want to bid on that because you get 80 to 90% of the eligible people stay in, as opposed to 1%, and you have to market to those people, and that's very costly. So that's why no one wants opt-in programs.
For the opt-out-only program, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but the rates would be much more agreeable?
Well, we don't know. Look at the bottom here. That's why I put these in for comparables. The Stark County program, which completely surrounds you, so Perry Township, which is, which is around you... The Stark County program, which completely surrounds you, so Perry Township, which is around you, they are in an opt-out program. They're at 464. And that goes through October 2026. City of Canton program is 3953. So that goes through October 2026. Now, you know, again, I don't have a crystal ball, but historically, SCO has been where people do better.
And my last, not so much a question, but a comment to say that I think it's very admirable. It's the right thing to do to not offer a program that isn't going to give to, we don't want to mislead residents into thinking the administration thinks this is a good idea, this is what I'm going to do because this is way above, you know, what I'm able to conceptualize and figure out on top of everything else that people are juggling in their homes. So I appreciate both of you for your insight and your guidance on this. And I agree that if it's not a good program, we should not put it forward.
Thank you.
Other questions, discussion? I would make two comments. One is I think we definitely need to look at putting an opt-out program on the ballot. To have, as you said, have it in place, ready to go in case we want to use it, not have to use it. And the other thing is, just for clarity, just so people understand, and those that may not know, Enbridge is bought out Dominion East Ohio Gas. So most people know the company Dominion East Ohio Gas and don't recognize the name Enbridge. They're a Canadian company. But I have an relative that works for them. So yeah, I just want to make that clear. Any other discussions or questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's it for Public Utilities and Environmental?
Yes.
All right. Next, we have Rules, Courts, Civil Service, which is my committee. I do have one piece of old business, which is the ordinance requesting City Council of the City of Massillon, Ohio to consider and vote to accept left-of-bargaining agreement between the City of Massillon, Ohio and Massillon Firefighters, IAFF Local 2511. Nothing, no developments there, other than I think we'll be ready to have an executive session on this on Monday. Okay.
Next, Streets, Highways, Traffic and Safety, Councilman Packley.
Thank you, Mr. Gregg. I have one item for this evening. Please prepare an ordinance to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for and receive sealed bids and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder upon the approval of the Board of Control for the Spring Hill Settlement Phase IV Improvement Project. And the funding source would be the 2513 for $150,000 or the 2510 for $100,000. Mr. Pitts, I believe you're here. If you'd like, please educate us on this.
Good evening, Council. Yes, so as the requested legislation states, this is the actual fifth phase, not the fourth phase, for the Spring Hill Settlement Resurfacing Project. It basically consists of resurfacing Green Ridge Road, Prairie Circle, oh, well, from Prairie Circle to Bramble Circle. It also includes Mosklin, Prairie, Oak Bluff Circle. And yeah, that's it. So does anyone have any specific questions about the project, I guess?
I'm trying to look on it. So what is it to do? I'm not familiar with this. If you could go a little bit...
Yeah, so you're, we're removing essentially four inches of roadway. So there's two inches, right now, there's two inches of asphalt and two inches of concrete underneath. However, I believe in the past, we've overlaid over the concrete. So we're removing all of that and reconstructing the roadway with fiberglass matting and putting in two and a half inches of asphalt back.
What's fiberglass matting?
Well, it's basically in between the base course and the intermediate course to distribute the loading between the two, between the two courses.
Is that a concrete road base, the initial? Is it concrete then with the asphalt over it?
Yes, yeah. It's two inches of concrete, two inches of asphalt, yeah.
Okay, so you're just going to remove the asphalt then?
No, we're removing the concrete as well.
All right, sorry about that.
No, you're fine, you're fine. I just wanted to, I was just looking at the...
Because you're doing a different project over at the golf course anyway. We're just trying to move the surface. Okay, anyone else have any questions? Mrs. Kramer?
Yep.
Can you clarify? So this is Phase Five. You stated, so the prior phases, we dealt with drainage issues in this settlement. I just wanted to be sure I'm thinking of the correct projects in this area.
Yes, yes.
So we fixed all the drainage in this settlement, Spring Hill Settlement. And now we're just repairing the roads now based on like all the work that was performed.
Yes, yeah. Essentially, you're also, you're lowering the roadway too. So that'll help with, there's curb there, right? But because we overlaid, a lot of the curb reveal just isn't working properly, essentially. So while we're going to allow that curb reveal to be revealed a little bit more, so now there will be like a two-inch curb reveal rather than like a half inch. You'll keep the water within the roadway rather than going into residence property, onto residence property, essentially. So that's the idea.
And we've reduced like issues out there?
Yeah.
With these phases. Okay, thank you.
Yep. How about Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Packley. What people don't remember, and I have lived up in that area for 44 years, when Spring Hill Settlement was brought into the city, was annexed into the city, those roads were never properly put in to begin with and it's not anything to do with the city. This, we're talking eons ago. So this is being repaired now, finally, and we're in the Phase Five, correct? Because many, many phone calls I've received over the years when I was Board One. What can be done with our streets? They're flooding, their water's coming into our, I think...
Who was it that died was on council?
When Councilman Chauvin, who lived up in that area, was on council prior to his passing, he would complain about it as well. And we're talking eons ago, we really are. And I am so grateful that we're finally, the city is taking care of that whole settlement up there. Because if you've never been up there, there's many, many homes up there. There's a huge lake up there that nobody ever knew about that drains down into Hess's Pond. So we're talking eons ago. But again, I am so grateful that the city is finally taking care of that area for the residents of our town.
Thank you. Any other questions? Diane?
Yes, just for clarification, you keep saying Phase Five, but the request for legislation says Four.
I know. That was a mistake on my part. It should say Five.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And we'll have that changed for, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Pitts. No problem.
Is that it, Mr. Packley?
That's it.
Thank you. And now we have Finance with Councilman Lewis.
Yes, the first piece we have is please prepare an ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriate balance of the 2101 wastewater treatment fund for the following accounts. Supplies material postage, 307,916. New equipment, 583,850 and 42 cents. Funds appropriated to be used for UV system magnetic flow meters at the plant and new back truck. Mr. Pitts?
All right, so to explain this one, so the first account from 2105 at the 610, so that's specifically at the plant, that is to purchase the magnet meters and the UV. And then the new equipment, the 615, that 583, that is for the new tandem axle back truck. So does anybody have any specific questions on any of the processes at the plant? The meters, the UV disinfection, or I guess the back truck itself?
All right.
Easy enough, okay. Thank you.
See, everyone knows that current, that account currently has a little over 8.6 million sitting in there. Please prepare legislation to appropriate from the unappropriate balance of the 1401 service and contract, or income tax capital improvement fund to the following. It's 122,524.2 to service contracts Axon. And this is early payment for 2026 to qualify for grant reimbursement, purchase additional grant qualifying equipment. And we have the chief here to discuss.
Good evening, Council. So what we're trying to do here is, well, first of all, let me set the stage here. A few years ago, we applied for a grant shortly after you guys had approved us to enter into an agreement with a company called Axon. They provide us with our tasers, our body worn cameras, and then the in-car video for all of our vehicles. We applied for a grant and we were granted that. And the way that the grant works is it's based off of how much you spend. And so every year since we were entered into this agreement with Axon, we make two payments a year to them. It's factored into our budget through the Budget Director. The first payment every year is in February and that's a payment of $98,870, I'm sorry, $887.16. And then we make another payment later on in the early fall for just around $32,000, $33,000. We want to pay early because the grant that we've already qualified for expires at the end of this year. And so what I'm asking for right now is an early payment for the $98,000 that we would normally pay in February. That's already kind of earmarked in our 2026 budget. I want to pay that early. We also want to get two additional body cameras because those also qualify for grant reimbursement. And then one new dash cam for a car. And something about the dash cams, you should understand, it's a total of three different cameras and then a DVR. We have a camera in the front of the car, a camera facing the rear, and then a camera in the backseat in the prisoner area. And all of that is, sends the video to what we call cradle point. It's the DVR that then uploads that footage. So that total comes into $122,000, what you guys see on the appropriation and request. So you're probably wondering, how much money are we going to get back? We will receive approximately $44,000 back. It will cover the entire purchase of the two additional body worn cameras and then also go back into that same account, the 1401, the big 1401, the income tax capital improvement fund. So it's a win-win for the city. We've already taken in, I think, over $90,000 on this grant and we're just trying to get it in before the deadline. So with that, I'll leave the floor open to any questions.
So we're, we've already paid the Fall one?
No, not yet. It's coming up at the end of this month.
So we're including the Fall, we're including next February?
So for 2025, the money has already been approved. It's already a part of our budget. We're going to make that payment. We want to pay that $98,000 early, the February payment.
February '26 payment early.
Correct.
And then two body cams and a new dash cam set up for one of the...
Correct. And the new dash cam is for our third K-9 car, which we were given a grant to pay $7,500 of an $11,000 price tag on a new K-9 to get a third K-9 this year in 2025. But we needed a car for that dog. Something that's unique about the K-9 vehicles is we can't put a prisoner in the backseat. That's the K-9 area. And so we had to kind of build that out. And because we used grant money for the dog and then we need a camera system for that car. So...
Mr. Markham?
Is this part of the OCJS grant or is this a different grant?
It is. It is through the state of Ohio, actually.
Okay, because I have, I just got an email today about the Office of Criminal Justice Services.
This one here, yeah. Just came through today.
Is that what that one is?
Yeah, this is for, so this is letting people know that in 2026, they're going to carry that forward. But they're only, they're going to give priority to agencies that have not already taken part in that. The goal of this grant was to try to get most of the agencies in the state of Ohio that couldn't afford the extremely high cost of body cameras to help offset that cost, to give them reimbursement, to encourage them to buy the body cameras and take part in that. So unfortunately, even if we reapply at the end of this year, we'll be put at the very back of the list because we've already been awarded so much money.
I'll just follow up on that and just say, it's really worth it having prosecuted these cases in the past. Axon's great. I think it usually comes with a GPS package where we can see where our folks are at.
We can see where our cruiser is, yes, sir.
Is this the one where we also are able to watch our guys live from the office?
Correct.
And then the fun part is you never know what your guy's going to say or hear, what you're going to see or hear. I've seen folks stuffing their drugs in the backseat of a cruiser before. Or, you know, you get those action shots in your high-profile cases too. So they're very important. And when our guys are involved in like an officer-involved shooting, I don't know if we've handled one anytime recently, but it comes in handy. I know, I shouldn't have said it.
Well, it's, one of the things too is the technology's great and it's officer safety. If you're calling an officer on the radio, because Councilman Markham talked about the GPS tracking, the cars are all GPS tracked. So if you're calling an officer and they're not responding, you can look at their location. You can find that. You can even remotely activate their body camera, see if they're, see what they're seeing, if they're not, if they're not moving, if they're motionless. So it's, I mean, I could go on for hours and talk about how great it is for, not just for the department, but for the community. It's transparency issue. So... And another thing too, go ahead, Diane. Correct, yes, I can do that. The $98,000 will be prepaid, then it will be lopped off of that budget for 2026. So it'll reduce our budget that will be requested here. I know that those talks have already kind of been going around here. And I've met with the Budget Director about our '26 budget. It'll be lopped off.
But a better example too, other than the extreme example, would be car accidents. Defended cops in car accidents before and the body cams helpful, or the cruiser cam. That's a happier example. My bad.
Yes.
Are there prepayment penalties to Axon if you pay now?
No. No, in fact, we've been working with them and explaining to them why we're prepaying and why our plan was to prepay. And they've been actually very happy to take our money early. So surprisingly.
Who would not?
Right.
And so just when you do this payment now, it makes your chances of grant more...
Well, what it does is it allows us to maximize that percentage that we can get in return because how much we get in return is based on how much we spend.
In '25.
Correct.
Or '26.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Gregg?
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. You mentioned that because we've received so many money in grants, in this grant in the past, we'd be put at the back of the line next year. Are we still going to apply though?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, our next piece, please prepare legislation to amend the First North Tax Increment Finance Agreement Ordinance Number 183, 2016, as attached. Mr. Hernking?
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, do you mind if I kind of speak to both at the same time?
That's fine.
So several months ago, part of this is just a housekeeping matter and the other part is there is kind of a rationale here. Several months ago, I went through and looked at all the TIF agreements. There are probably 25 or so existing TIF agreements that the city has going back 25, 26 years. There were two that stuck out to me kind of as sore thumbs. It's these two, the First North TIF and the Stark Glass TIF. These are the only two that include, do you have, is your copy a color copy? So these are the only two that kind of have this restrictive language at the end of Exhibit B. Ironically, on the same date that these two were passed by City Council on December 29, 2016, a third TIF was, Happy Birthday, a third TIF was passed, the Wendy's TIF, which did not include this language. So I really don't know why all the TIFs before and then all the TIFs after exclude this language, which in essence, I'm asking you to amend both of these ordinances to remove the language as well. the language as well. They're both a little different, but the gist is the same. They both, both require or restrict the amount of money that the property owner can be reimbursed for infrastructure improvements set forth by the Ohio Revised Code. There's two ways to spend money from a TIF account. One is if the city does it to do some type of public infrastructure improvement. We've seen that before, even just recently, I think. But the second one is when a private, the owner of that property that is TIF'd wants to do some infrastructure improvements as well. So I don't really know why nine years ago, these two were singled out. Again, they passed another TIF that night that didn't have it. So I'm asking you to remove this restriction that the property owner can only be reimbursed up to 50% of what those TIFs produce in a given year. So that's the housekeeping, just trying to make these as consistent across the board as possible. So I'm going to shift gears just a second. Mike Knight is the owner of Stark Glass Enterprises located on Nova Drive down by, in the Nova Industrial Park, just off of Knave Road. They built their facility maybe eight, nine years ago. There is a vacant parcel, two parcels to the east, just south of Sherwin-Williams. Now, Mike, as an individual, not as Stark Glass, has acquired that three and a quarter acre parcel, and he is proposing, he has some, there's some steps in order to, for him to do it. One would be, he'd need a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals for setbacks. I think this might play into it too. But he intends on building 55,000 square feet of warehousing space on that parcel, for lease to other businesses in the industrial park there, some other businesses throughout the city, in an effort to allow them, honestly, we need more warehousing space in the city. We do. So he's taking this on his own initiative to build that, lease it to Masland companies to solidify their existence here in the city. As a Masland guy, he's going to use mostly 80, 90% Masland contractors. That's just how he does things. And he's looking at this project next year. One of the things he has to do as part of this development is run a gas line. The Enbridge gas line stops somewhere north of the property in question. So he would have to run and pay for a new gas line to connect his warehouses, and there's going to be several of them, onto that property. So where this ties into kind of what I'm asking is what he'd also like to do is while he's running that line to the vacant parcel, he'd like to run that line along Nova Drive down to the existing Stark Glass property because they're currently serviced with gas through, I believe, a well to the east of the property, and I think it's Northeast Ohio Gas, which is an uncommon in this area type of supplier. It's very costly to him. He can't get Enbridge to use that line because it comes straight from the well. So where the TIF funds from his perspective would be, while he's doing his personal project, he'd like to continue to run the gas line along Nova to get the Enbridge gas to Stark Glass. And estimates from a couple years ago were maybe around $30,000 to do that. With the restriction on this TIF account that he can only be reimbursed amount not to exceed 50% of the yearly TIF revenue, I don't know what year they choose, but I can tell you in 2024, the Stark Glass TIF produced about $16,700. So half of that is $8,300 and some dollars. So if he wanted to approach the city and say, I'd like to do an infrastructure improvement by running this gas line, this ordinance says he could only be reimbursed up to, let's say, $8,000. So while he's doing, we're, we're thinking, we're trying to do two things at one time here. He's going to accommodate on his own accord, the own, his development, but if there's a way to tie in running that gas line, which would save him a lot of money, which he can reinvest in his business, I'd like to see this, at least this one, changed so he could get a little more reimbursement through an agreement with us next year when the time comes, should the project come to fruition. So in a nutshell, and I tried to make that as uncomplicated as possible, probably didn't come out that way, but.
Thank you, Councilman Lewis. So the, these two TIFs are the only ones that have this line in the end that says reimbursement may not exceed 50%. All our other TIFs do not have that?
The ones that were 25 plus years old are written a little differently, but there's still no restriction on that. Every TIF from probably 10 or 12 years ago on to current, all stop at, by the owner of the property, right there at the middle of the paragraph. So none of the other TIFs include either in the exhibit or in the ordinance itself that restrictive language.
So are we, so by doing this, instead of having the yearly, then whatever's in the TIF account, I mean, if he could use it and it's there, we could award it to him?
By agreement with the city on, if it's reasonable, maybe we would entertain.
So we can award it to an individual and not a business?
Well, in this instance, we would award it to Stark Glass utilizing the ordinance that states that parcel to be affected or improved.
So this new investment property, how do you award that?
It wouldn't. It's separate. But the only connection is while he's doing, no, we don't, no TIF funds can be utilized for that project.
Okay.
It would only be utilized from, once he does that on his own, it would be used to run the gas line along Nova to the parcel where the ordinance states those funds can be used. I tied, I'm trying to tie those two things together for you, but one is not affected by the TIF. The, we'll call it, the B part of the project would be.
Okay.
But while he's doing them at this, the goal would be to do them at the same time, obviously, while he's running the connection, probably several hundred feet to where the new project is.
There's some other language that's crossed out about parks and bicycles and things like that, is there?
That was not my crossing out. That was actually crossed out and just not removed from the original ordinance. So in the First North TIF, those things were already crossed out and they're part of, that's why I made the copy in red so you could see what it was, but it's only the bottom part.
Okay. Thank you.
And to my knowledge, I have no information on whether Mr. Gessner's planning on doing anything at the First North Building. I just tried to run them together to make them consistent.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I had the same question. I was asking about the, the language, the street-related improvements, and I was just wondering if it was going to come off of the other one, but I guess if you.
That will remain crossed off.
Okay. Because it's, it's visible on this one.
Yeah, I don't know why they just didn't remove it from when they did the ordinance back then, but I think it was removed when council, it was removed at the time council approved it back then. I don't know why they just didn't give you a fresh copy at the time.
Okay. Well, no, what I'm saying is on the first, yeah, on the other TIF. It's, it's on that one. It's, it's not crossed out on that one.
Because he has a park and things.
Okay.
Yeah, my assumption is First North does have a park across the street. It's also close to downtown, so the downtown improvement would make sense where Stark Glass.
No.
Wouldn't have it.
Not relevant.
Makes sense. Thank you.
I have one more thought. Going forward with the TIF agreements, will you just strike this language? Is that something you won't have in the template any longer?
They won't be in. And they're not in any of the ones we've passed over the last eight years or so.
Okay.
It's not stock language, which is why I found it odd that it was even there.
Just two quick questions. One, fair to say this gas main getting extended, that would affect and improve other people's properties as well if they wanted to tie in, probably. Is that fair?
If they wanted to tie on, yes, I guess they could.
And then do we know how much money is just sitting in these TIFs because our hands are tied on them?
So the Stark Glass TIF currently has $103,000 in it. First North about 100, a little more than $167,000.
So that's pretty difficult to spend if we were going to keep the restriction, if we wanted to use the improvement funds then?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Mr. Hearn-Kane, I just need a little bit more education on the TIFs. It's been a while since I've dealt with these, and I've not been on council long enough to where we've had one of these. So it's a 75, it's on the value of the property, the increased value, 75% of that value goes into the TIF, right? Of the increased value. I'm not trying to quiz you, I'm trying to learn.
Every parcel of property has a tax value.
Correct.
Let's say it's unimproved and it's $5,000 or $10,000. Say Mr. Lewis builds a building on that, now his tax value goes, the buildings he would build, probably 30, 40, 50 million dollars in value, right?
In his dream.
So his, what the TIF does is it locks in his existing tax base.
At that.
And the increment in the tax increment financing is the difference between the locked-in base rate and the new improved value. So you're looking at this, where 75% of that value is abated, the property owner pays the 25%. So what the TIF does by, when council approves an ordinance and we send it to the state of Ohio and we send it to the county auditor, when then Mr. Lewis goes to pay his taxes on his new fancy building, then the county redirects the taxes that would be paid to all the various entities depending on where you live. You know, if you live in the city of Masland, Masland City Schools, or Perry or Tuslaw School, your tax rate, well, the rates change, but also who you're paying the tax to changes, right? So the auditor then takes the amount of the taxes that would be paid and distributed to the libraries, the museums, the, all the other entities.
The 25%.
They, they accept the 25%.
Okay.
Or the 25% then goes to those entities, but the 75% that is exempted goes into a certain TIF fund, which is where you see.
Okay.
Is distributed back, and then you see it on the, on the sheet and all these TIF funds where those balances come from. So those monies just accrue. A lot of the TIFs we've done in recent memory have been 10 years. I don't think we've done a 30-year in a long time. But during those 10 years that it's on the tax rolls, these TIF accounts accrue sometimes significant funds that can be used for public infrastructure projects.
The property owner is still paying their full assessed value of taxes, correct?
Correct.
It's just going into different funding.
75% is being redirected. Yep, correct.
That's, thank you.
So you're right, but that is a good point to make. He's still paying his property taxes, it's just going to a different place.
And then we can decide where some of that money might be used for other projects throughout the city or certain areas.
Well, correct. Just as we had the conversation a couple months ago with the Millennium Lighting, utilizing the two TIFs that are down there that are for those infrastructure improvements so that the city doesn't have to use general fund dollars to do so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Howard Smith.
So this is just kind of a general question, I'm wondering this, I don't know if it applies to gas lines. I know, like out in my area, when they built Hunter's Run or whatever, and they put like city water out, like if anybody who wanted to tap into those water lines, like the builder, like he would be the one putting the gas lines in. So like years ago, for the, these water lines, there was like a 2025 year agreement since he put them in, that if anybody tapped into it, they would have to pay him. So being that he would be using TIF funds to do this, he wouldn't be able to put some type of agreement in writing on the gas lines that someone would have to pay him for the infrastructure if they went into it?
No, I don't, I, that would not be allowed.
All right. Thank you, Greg Hearn-Kane.
All right, thank you.
The next piece we have is please prepare legislation where as all future notices and publications required under ORC, that such publication can be accomplished through a posting on the website and social media council of municipal corporations, specifically the ordinance passed by Masland City Council. Mr. Markham.
Yeah, so this is that ordinance we talked about a few weeks back where we were all like, wait, how are we spending $2,000 on publication? Well, this is the ordinance to fix that and not spend $2,000 a month or every two months on publication. So whenever we pass a resolution or pass an ordinance, we'll just publish it on the website, on our social media, and we'll be good to go.
All we have to do is put it on the website?
Well, 731.21A3 lists, I'm not looking at it in front of me, I don't have it pulled up, but its website and social media are the two places you have to post them.
So we would have to, in both places?
So we would have to post in both places. If we were a charter government, we could do things a little bit more funky, but we're statutory, so we have to follow the RC here.
All right.
Technically, there's other workarounds, but don't fix it if it's not broke.
Just.
If I can call up the mayor real quick.
My, my question, and maybe it's part of, does posting a link to the website on social media count as posting on social media?
So you don't have to post the full ordinance, you just have to post the title summary. So exactly what we're publishing in the newspaper is what we'd be publishing here. I'm going to pull up the statute here and I can read it exactly what we have to do.
Why are you pulling that up? Just from what you're hearing right here, do you think as an administration, you have the framework in place that would be able to get these onto social media?
In my opinion, I think you should probably start a new Facebook page and have Diane post these on social media, maybe Masland City Council Facebook page, and have her post them through that. And then we could share that on the city Facebook page or, you know, on our website or whatever, you know, however you wanted to do that. But I think the city council should start a Facebook page. Diane could run that, post those weekly.
So our responsibilities would be to post a succinct summary of each municipal ordinance resolution and all statements, orders, proclamations, notices and reports required by law or ordinance to be published, shall be published, using at least one of the following methods, method three, on the website and social media account of the municipal corporation. So I think we would have to do the municipal corporation's Facebook page, but potentially if we had a council Facebook page shared by the municipal corporation's Facebook page, that would check that box. And then Diane and I talked a little bit about posting it on our website, that shouldn't be a, too much of an issue. And whatever the issue is, is probably cheaper than paying 12 grand a year, 24 grand a year, depending on.
I just wanted to make sure, because for a second there, it seemed like we were starting to try to obligate other people to things that were outside of our box to obligate, so I wanted to make sure we talked about that.
But I.
Does anybody have questions for the mayor, or can we let him go back to sitting down?
Hey, doing, Mayor. Thank you. So, so do you have, have any idea who manages the website? Are we, do we do that inside, in-house? Do we manage?
Well, we, we do have on our website, our administrative assistant does post on there through Renee, the Safety Service Director. Our one engineer has access to that.
Okay. Yeah, that's perfect.
But as far as the Facebook page, you know, I feel that asking our administrative assistants to post those weekly, you know, we can share those, but I feel, you know, city council should have a Facebook page that.
Yeah.
Does that.
Well, I mean, because basically what they're saying is the insight of the fact that it has to be on the website as well as, and I know that, you know, if I call someone to edit my website, it's gonna, you know, I gotta, I gotta pay you to do all these changes, like from time to time, to have these consultations. So with that being said, if you have.
Well, I do have administrative authority, like to post our minutes.
Oh, with.
Our agenda.
You can do it.
It's just putting on a new title to put.
No tab.
The ordinances, so that they can access them from the website and then also the Facebook page. And another thing that came to mind is that because we do publish them in the independent, we should notify the independent to post that our ordinance is no longer will be published in the independent. You will have to contact our website or our Facebook page.
So I was actually going to speak to that, Diane. I think, and this is my opinion, I think it's probably the way we need to go because it's kind of where we are, but if we want to show some prudence here, maybe we make this effective January 1, that this gives the remainder of this year that we continue it. It allows time for Diane, Mr. Slater, to work out the kinks of what the posting and sharing is going to look like. Nothing will stop us from creating a Facebook page and starting to post and share and start working through that and making sure we have the kinks worked out. And then January 1, we just stop telling the newspaper about it.
That's fair.
Mr. Markham.
I was just going to add that this is a very popular method now, and a lot of rural villages have figured it out. I feel like with our assets, we can figure it out as well.
Brad News.
With the, just going back to having it be the city, I, if the ORC says it needs to be under the municipality, I think we should look at that carefully to make sure that we're not outside.
that we're not outside whatever needs to be done, because they do trace it back to whomever is the owner. Um, so, you know, if, just to give it legitimacy, um, not that a city council Facebook wouldn't have legitimacy, but if it's under the administration's Facebook, however the, the language needs to be, so that they can trace it to the right place, I think is important.
Yeah. Regardless, I think it'd be important that if, for some reason, the language would mean that we'd have to go through Ci- uh, City of Maslin's official Facebook, that we need to take care of the actual legwork, so all they're doing is pushing a button, if it gets to that point. Mr. Ray.
Well, our, our Facebook has the ability to form a, an, a group inside of-
True, true.
So you can have the City of Maslin page, and then just have a group underneath the City of Maslin, so then that person will have access to that and not have to worry about the rest of everything else. That's possible.
We have our own city- We have our own city council page-
Oh, whatever.
On the Maslin City website.
We're good.
But keep in mind, this is a cost savings to the city-
Yes.
For taxpayer dollars.
Right.
So, we're all in this together.
Yes.
So it should be like, you know, the most simpler mode of getting this completed.
Okay. I added language to the request, saying it would go into effect on January first.
Okay, so we'll want to remove the emergency language.
I did that as well.
Okay.
So, and then, uh, we can move it forward for Monday.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, the last piece we have here is a transfer, removing twenty-five thousand from police comp time, putting it into overtime, um, any questions? All right, that's all we have, Mr. Gregg.